There was a statement I made the other day, and I'd like to repeat that. And this was by a coach of the 1980 Winter Olympics, Herb Brooks. "Great moments are born from great opportunities." Sink on that for a minute, because that's what's happening here. That's what's been happening, that's what's been moving forward. This is a great opportunity for the city, the town of San Tan Valley at this very moment. These seven individuals, they'll tell you, they're probably not the best. And I'm gonna agree with them. But I will tell you, there was a lot of thought process that was put between those 86 applications by all five of us supervisors. And through that, these seven individuals were chosen, I believe in Phil, because they have a purpose. The seven individuals together constitute the council. And if you understand councils and the process of that, not one of them individually has more power by themselves at all. But all seven of these individuals together will give leadership and direction for this new community moving forward. There's a lot of power in that. There's a lot of power in that. I neglect to realize we've got other stakeholders here, present. Take notice of them. We've got the superintendent of Florence School District. I think we have some other representatives from other schools. If they had raised their hands. Thank you. They're gonna be key people helping you, because their goal is the same. I believe in Phil that is the goal of this municipality. To improve the ability for families to grow and prosper, and to make life more manageable for them. And that, to me, that's always been my goal, sitting on this board. And I believe it's been the same decision that all five of us, we've all taken that, because all of us have great families that we come from, and great families that we're a part of today. So if I can give you any words of wisdom, think of the family first and foremost, the kids, what that makeup looks like. Families come in different sizes, different shapes, and so on and so forth. So remember that. Now with that being said, for the sake of time, I'm done speaking. Okay? You guys can take a seat. So what we'll do is we'll move into the oath of office. And it's not in any particular order, but alphabetic order, right? Okay. So the first one to be sworn in is Tyler Hudgens. And if you...
The plots are not done, because everybody did not say it, so we'll do that after.
Okay, okay. So, oh, the Bible. Do you have somebody you want to hold the Bible? Okay. Do we have one? I hit it. And then this is our county clerk, Natasha Kennedy. You can give her applause. She's behind the scenes. She's the one, when we say "we'll" to get this done, she's our "we," this young lady right here, she's our "we." So she'll be delivering the oath of office.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Tyler Hudgens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the State of Arizona.
And the laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of San Tan Valley Town Council.
San Tan Valley Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, we have Brian Hunt. You want us to come this way? We're getting some direction here.
We're getting family.
Okay. We do.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Hunt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the State of Arizona.
And laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
The Office of San Tan Valley Town Council.
The Office of San Tan Valley Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Our next one is Gia Jenkins.
I state your name.
I, Gia Jenkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the State of Arizona.
And laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
In allegiance to the same.
In allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of the Office of.
The duties of the Office of.
San Tan Valley Town Council.
San Tan Valley Town Council.
According to.
According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We got you guys out of order. You guys can't...
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Daniel Oakes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the State of Arizona.
And laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
In allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Domestic, foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of the Office.
Discharge the duties of the Office.
Of San Tan Valley Town Council.
Of San Tan Valley Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, now we've got Darren Schneff.
I, Darren Schneff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Arizona.
Of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of the Office of.
The duties of the Office of.
San Tan Valley Town Council.
San Tan Valley Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Brian Tyler.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Tyler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Arizona.
Of the State of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
In allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of the Office of.
The duties and the Office of.
San Tan Valley Town Council.
San Tan Valley Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'm doing that because I'm gonna be able to share the load now. Last but surely not least is Rupert Woolford. You'll fit right into this community, I'll tell that right now, if you haven't already.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rupert Woolford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Arizona.
Of the great State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
In allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of the Office of.
The duties of the Office of.
San Tan Valley Town Council.
San Tan Valley Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thanks for landing here. So, stand up again. Ladies and gentlemen, it is a great pleasure and honor to introduce to you your first Town Council of San Tan Valley. I'm wearing this pink shirt for a reason. I also have another engagement that I need to tend to, honoring one of our daughters. If you're a politician, I'm gonna give you a mic, but please, keep it within a minute at the most, because of time. But if each one of you would like to come up and express your feelings, or whatever you want to say. We'll start with you, Brian.
I'm gonna have a minute? All right, take two. I was gonna tell a little story, but I think that my story goes back 25 years. 25 years ago, I was living in a small rural town in Idaho, and I told my wife at that point that I wanted to be part of a town council. It was a dream of mine at that point. I went to school, finished up my career, or finished up my school, got a career, and that never happened. I eventually moved to Arizona, and we found San Tan Valley as home. With the last name of Hunt, we saw Hunt Highway, and I thought, this has gotta be the place for us to be. I just, I really appreciate the support that my family has given me. When I told my wife a couple months ago, I said, "I don't know how this election's gonna go, but if it does pass, I would be interested in running or being part of the town council." And she probably thought I was having a midlife crisis or something. But I just want to share appreciation for my wife, for her support for the last 30 years, for my parents in teaching me to serve others, and for love of my country, for my kids, for the Pinal County Board of Supervisors for their support. I know there's been several times where this has tried to get to where it is now, and I want to thank those who blazed the trail to try to get this San Tan Valley incorporated. And your efforts were not in vain, they were not futile. I want to express my appreciation to the current incorporation committee with council member Hudgens and his team, and everything that they've done to get it to this point. I'm just thankful for all of those that supported me. And God bless America, and may God bless San Tan Valley.
Well, I can say, I never wanted to be in a council, so. It was never on my roadmap. I never thought I would be in a position like this. You know, my career just kind of spans through utility work, working for different municipalities throughout the area. And living out here, and seeing the lack of resources and things that this community needed, most importantly, a place where a community can come together and become one. That's what kind of led me... Sorry. I'm a... Take after my dad. I hate him for this, but... That's what got me going into this. Community needed resource. My kids needed places to go for sporting events, and it got me involved, and I'm just grateful to be in the position to serve with these great people. Thank you for all the applicants. I had an opportunity to sit and talk with all of the interviewees, and I tell you what, to be picked above any of those people, I don't know what you were thinking. They were fantastic candidates, so it's a pleasure mine to serve with each and every one of you, and to represent you, San Tan Valley, and bring the resources and needs back to this community like it's long time needed. Supervisor Goodman, our hearts are for your daughter, and our prayers are for her as well. Thank you.
I wrote stuff down, because I'm terrible at this stuff. So I had a quote that I wanted to say, or a little acronym that I wanted to say in my interview, but I couldn't remember it. It was four words. And it was based on, this is my inspiration, so it was Town of San Tan Valley, and I wrote, "Today's steps, tomorrow's vision." It is both humbling and deeply inspiring to stand before you today as a member of the first inaugural Town Council of San Tan Valley. This is more than a ceremony, it is a historic moment. Together, we have the privilege and responsibility of writing the very first chapter of our town's story from the moment of incorporation forward. I see San Tan Valley as a place that honors its past, serves the needs of today, and prepares boldly for the future. The decisions we make will not only set policies, they will set a foundation. A foundation upon which families will feel safe, businesses will grow, and neighbors will flourish in community with one another. I pledge to serve with integrity, transparency, and fairness. And I look forward to working alongside my fellow council members, and each of you as neighbors and partners, and as visionaries for what this town can become. To my family, friends, and supporters, thank you. Your love and encouragement make this service possible, and I carry you with me in this work for the next busy months. The future of San Tan Valley is in our hands, and I believe that together, we will build something remarkable. A town with strong roots, a bold vision, and a bright future for generations to come. And I'm gonna end with my quote again. "Today's steps is tomorrow's vision."
Thank you all for coming out today. I know you didn't have to be here, but it's great to see the support of you here for us. We're new. My wife doesn't know what she got herself into, but she'll find out quick. There was a time when me and my wife would stop in Gansel, which turns into Ironwood right there on Okatillo Road, which was a stop sign, and it seems like we would sit there for about a minute or two, and we would just talk in the middle of the intersection before all the growth came out here. Like Brian, we got two Bryans here, so we have to kind of start learning the two of them. But like Brian said just before, you know, it's not something I was seeking that I thought I'd ever be in this position. But as I lived in San Tan Valley, as I grew my family in San Tan Valley, every one of my children graduated high school out of San Tan Valley in one of the high schools. I saw it quickly growing, and it has such a great opportunity and a great potential for us, now that we are a town, to continue to grow and go forward. I am very humbled to be in this position right here before you. I'm thankful for the opportunity, and that the Board of Supervisors have given me the opportunity to present myself in front of them for this opportunity to stand in front of you. And the oath that I took, I believe 100% in everything that was said in there, to defend this country, to defend this area, to seek out truth and faith, and see that this area grows for all of us, to have a place to call home, and not want to ever leave. And I thank you for this opportunity. I thank Mike, he has been a great supervisor for District 2. It was an area, I remember when he was running, it was like, "Who's this guy? He's running out here." But he saw a vision going forward for this area, and saw the lack that there was, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to see that vision, and we're gonna make it work. And we appreciate your support. We thank you, I'm thankful for you. And that's it. Well, I always think politicians should talk less, and citizens should talk more, so I'll be brief. I just want to express an immense amount of gratitude for an opportunity to serve you. That's what this is all about. After 21 years of being in San Tan Valley, all of my kids were raised here. We love it here, it's our home. And it's a home we have with you. And we want to govern, help, and counsel in a way that includes all of you. Those who want to help, we want your help. We want to be with you, we want to lock arms with you, and be shoulder to shoulder with the community, to work to make San Tan Valley a place to belong, a place to be, a place where we're proud to live. We're grateful for this chance to serve. Thank you.
Well, if you need to get me off, just play some awards music, and I'll get a clue. I'm a veteran. 15 years ago, thank you. And I don't know if any of you know a veteran, or related to a veteran. When we come back from serving abroad, there's a period of time where we really look inward and reflect what it is exactly that we're fighting for. And I want to echo the recurrent theme with some of my fellow council members, that sounds wonderful, my fellow council members, of this idea of home. It took a long time for me to find home. I found that home here, among you. And for that, I'll be forever grateful. I want to thank, of course, my family and all of you. I know as we take these collective steps forward as a community, so long as we do so together, with a commitment to our faith, our families, our values, we are gonna be okay. I just want to reassure you with that. So thank you again, and I'm really excited.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to first start by thanking my wife, our families, and then the incorporation committee for all the work that was put into this. uh, and then the incorporation committee for all the work that was put into this. Um, I want to start by sharing a story. Uh, my wife and I, we went to Universal Studios and specifically to Waterworld. And if you know the show Waterworld, there's jet skis and boats and you get wet and all that stuff. And so we're going into the stadium and going up the steps and there's the first three rows, there's these green rows that say the soak zone. And this is the area where you get wet and if you don't want to get wet, you go in the back. And so there were 20 more rows behind that and, uh, they were all full because they were not the soak zone and it was the middle of December. So it was very, very cold and I said to my wife, I said, hey, let's sit in the soak zone. And she was like, are you crazy? It is the middle of December, it's cold. I said, oh, come on, it'll be so much fun, we'll enjoy it. And she says, you see those two people over there? They were literally the only two in the soak zone. And she goes, they have ponchos on. They have towels, none of which that we have. And I said, oh, it'll be fun. So she realized I wasn't going to relent, so we went and sat in the soak zone. And within two seconds, of course, I was called up to volunteer, uh, because I was the only one dumb enough to sit in the front row without a poncho on. And I was wet in two seconds, she was wet, the people in the ponchos were wet, although they weren't as wet as we were. Um, and it was a great experience. We ended up leaving that event and we were walking through the park and we're shivering, but we were full of so much joy. We had so much fun because we took the risk and we stepped in the soak zone. On August 5th, 2025, Santan Valley stepped into the soak zone. And that is a powerful moment for this community. And the cool thing about being in the soak zone with my wife Kelsey was we were in it together. We were experiencing it together. And this community, we are in this together. This is our home, this is our community, and we get the opportunity to do the next right thing as the town council of Santan Valley. And I believe in the next five, 10, 20 years, we're going to look back at this moment and say, I am so glad we stepped in the soak zone. So thank you to everyone for being here, we really appreciate you guys.
Well, my fellow supervisors coming up, I just, you know, it dawned on me a couple, three days ago that, uh, we've, the county has been the one that has been the governing head over what's taking place here in Santan Valley.
You've been the mayor?
Yeah, I've been the mayor and the council, let's, let's be real. I don't have to worry about that anymore. This is your team. I'm a supporting staff. That's the way we view this. We're there to support you, brothers and sister. That's what we're here for. One final comment. Up until the election was held and passed. The Board of Supervisors were the ones that made the decision for this area. And only one of us lived in this area. You're on, you're on the hook. But I will tell you, not moving forward. Not moving forward. These are your decision makers. One of the first experiences I had was whenever we were building Ocatillo. And all the road construction and everything was going on. And I went into the new, newly opened, um, Ace Hardware. And as I went in there, I noticed a good friend of mine, Sterling Levitt, he stands about six foot eight and his boys with him and he's equally as tall and equally as big. And Sterling comes over and he's towering over me and he knew what he was doing. He said, hey, everybody, this is your Pinal County Supervisors. If you have any problems with these roads, he's your guy. And then he walked off. I was an hour and a half in that room, no more. Hey, everybody. This is your town council. If you have a problem with the roads or you lack the, the amenities here, that's who you talk to. You got it? They moved out of the basement.
Thanks, Mike. So I just want to, I just want to say, you know, thank you for everyone being here. Tyler, you talked about being in these, in the soak zone? Actually, you're in the dunk tank. Because now you're going to be sitting up there and people will be throwing stuff at you, you're going in the water, dude. I mean, that's it, that's, you know. And, and Dan, I, I do appreciate your, you know, politicians should speak less. And, and, you know, just, just saying, just, just saying, you know. And, you know, citizens more and, and Darren, you grow in your family like, you know, like a farmer, man, that, I got to say, you know. So anyway, thank you all for being here, appreciate it. A while ago, Mike recognized some people that were here, but the cities recognized schools, but I want to, I want to thank the county employees. I know there's some county folks out here. Could you stand, please? Yeah. Because, you know, I don't, you know, now I'm going to do your thing, I'm going to be like my dad, okay? I, you know, we do the same thing, so. Uh, but anyway, you know, their support, you know, has been great and it's going to be the, the future supporter of the county to make this city, or this town, excuse me, uh, you know, a success. We look forward to that. Thanks to everybody that applied. Uh, you know, it was a difficult decision to choose, but I think that this group is going to do a great job. And, you know, you do have a monumental task, you know, A, behind you as the incorporation committee, and those of you that served on the incorporation committee, congratulations. But you've got a task ahead of you to get this off the ground. And I think that's, is going to be great and we're here to help you. You know, I'm from the government, I'm here to help, you'll get that one. So, uh, yeah, thank you for being willing to take this on, though, I really appreciate it. So, as a side note, my, um, my father-in-law used to be the county administrator for San Bernardino County in California, biggest county in the country. And he moved over to what is now Dewey-Humboldt years ago. And he sat out in the audience while they were doing an incorporation committee and they, they'd say, oh, we've got to do this, we've got to do that. And he's like, excuse me, there's a thing about that, there's a federal program for that. Oh, thank you. Sit down. They'd talk on, then he'd say, hmm, excuse me, there's a state program for that. And after a while, they said, hey, would, would you like to join this incorporation committee? He's like, nope. Because I just want to just ride my horse and be happy. But no, he wound up on the incorporation committee and then he wound up being the first elected mayor for two terms. So, you know, that's, that's what happens to you when you do this stuff. So, and that was the 90th city in the state. And at that time, that was roughly the same number of cities that were in LA County in California. So think of that for a minute, that's like, you know, pretty tight, so. Anyway, I just want to say, you know, again, thank you to everybody and all I can say is make it better than you found it, you know, and congratulations. So that's it. I'm the closer. Everybody have a great night. Thanks for coming.